Um Islam y'all Islam 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 we are here we are here we are here for another you know about thirty minutes more or less right um gratitude to those joining um so quick introduction cuz that's what today is right it's the welcome think of it like um first day of school right high school and up where now we're not about to really get started on the first day we're gonna show you what we're going to be doing after the first day right so first of all welcome thank you all for joining and all that goodness um if you see me looking down it's because I have my notes cuz why I respect your time right so this is class class one I guess the first study session for the Sabbath or Saturday study sessions right because if any of y'all remember I think it was a couple of years ago the Moores were coming out every Saturday morning and building right and I'm like what what happened to that let's bring it back right and what an opportune time to bring it back because it's our forty days of gifting alright the forty days which is um from giving Tuesday right after Thanksgiving right um so I guess November twenty seventh all the way until the Prophet's born day on January eighth that's forty days right and in that time we started it as collecting for Mercy charities a Moorish charity is a Moorish charity right and we actually helped the Moores so that's how it started and um but this year we're gonna do something a little different if you hadn't heard I checked Khalifa media or not Khalifa media Mercy charities bank account and it was like we don't need to ask for anything the Moores have been continuously giving throughout the year since we started like Mercy charities really like debuted I guess during um giving Tuesday of last year and the Moores just kept giving it was Moores who subscribed to just kept keep giving right and if you wanna do that do that but that's not what that's for I'm just standing to mention it and I'm like wow and then from some of our other campaigns we didn't use up all the funds so every initiative we had planned to ask for this year to ask for um donations to fund this year is kinda handled with the surplus because of what the Moores did last year I guess or yeah but anyway so and that with that being said this forty days we're giving is forty days of gifting back alright so Mercy charities in conjunction with a whole bunch of active Moores all the Moores who donated a couple businesses couple temples right it's a collaborative after I'm saying a couple because some others have joined in and there's plenty of time alright um what a way to network right and um so with that we're going to going to be giving back right and this is my small Khalifa media's small contribution right if you would let me be so modest as to offer it right so before I get into it right I'm gonna introduce myself I'm getting you to break down introduce myself right introduce the purpose of this series cuz who knows how long it'll go hopefully it'll just keep going um and then we'll get into the introduction to how to um the introduction to how to actually win a case in um federal court alright or at least get it to a point where you could want it and if you know what I'm talking about good if you don't you'll find out alright so first a little bit of housekeeping for those watching on YouTube if you would please um like share subscribe all that good stuff right so we can start getting this out because Moores are on the rise alright um in the lead up to the Prophet's born day or the Prophet Prophet's Day celebration or the Moorish Christmas however you wanna refer to it right Moores have stuff and there is a month away right little less than a month away there's still time to send people gifts here I am shameless plug real quick right gotta do some housekeeping so and I figure if I don't say nothing nobody will know right first thing we got books cuz we're a book company right so um I'm gonna show you all the ones that I have in stock right now like in the house and if you order direct you can get it from Amazon bars and noble anybody that sells books but if you order direct you get Moores goodies right and I've been working on some new stickers and I'm gonna send out samples to see if people like them and I think I'm I figured out how to make fake leather so I'm gonna be testing out some bookmarks too so if you order our stuff you get to get some of that stuff before it goes on sale you just get a sample and tell me what you think right so what we have in-house ready to leave the door tomorrow or Monday I guess right of course isonomy right okay oh and I should mention everything in the shop is fifteen percent off until the Prophet's birthday so yeah you save money too um sisters auxiliary guidebook must have for the ladies alright cuz notice there's not that many chapters telling the women what to do in the Quran cuz we have our own book alright um of course the Holy Quran circle seven paperback I don't have any hard cover you can get those online somewhere um then of course seventy-seven amazing facts about the Moores black and white and color I think this is the color edition yes this this is the built one cuz yeah you gotta test out printers cuz some of them do better than others right so this is from the good printer might wanna get those before I can't get anymore um of course the torch right black and white and color ready to leave the door right oh we sent we can you can order it and send it to somebody else and yes we do deliver to prisons alright where it's like thanks for being because we're hooked up or linked up with a temple they actually kinda sorta a little bit can't open or mess with the package I can't guarantee they won't but it's like they're not supposed to because of who it's coming from and how it's being handled so if you wanna send something to someone you think it's like dude you need to stop it with X Y and Z because you're that close yeah you can order stuff for them right and again we deliver to prisons hospitals all that good stuff and internationally and of course our latest release hidden in plain sight right okay again everything's fifteen percent off that's the books that's what I have in house right now that's all the books put that there we also have goodie baubles that's the word bauble I love that word right we have Faz key rings right hand drawn right and vector whichever you please buy one buy the other or buy them both right make great gifts right carry your fans to the temple and everywhere else right alright what else we got um oh these are fun I had to make a little card for this one cuz it was so cool uh these are charms right modeled after the Prophet's uh bag the sash he had on right modeled after sash I think I tried to do it it'll look better when you get it right so you can just get the charm or you can get it with a lobster claw and it's a key ring right I'm gonna get through this real quick um of course buttons buttons right and I have a button maker everything what let me see it's like pretty much everything is made in house right I have a button maker so if you have like a request a specific request I can make you buttons right no problem um of course we have what is that I gotta make some more backs out of these cuz they keep going out it's like it's crazy how often I have to print out the backs for these things the key twenty um hard enamel I think this is metal nah this ain't enamel this metal uh sash pen right not sash it's just a pen um and then we have the Islam pin alright cuz Moores have stuff we actually have a culture we can celebrate right I couldn't find it why do you do this I couldn't find anything so I made it right and now you can get it too right of course when people ask you what's your nationality what's your nationality right you don't even have to say nothing right until people get used to it and when they see you they like oh yeah okay alright um and not because you just copper colored something else going on right and of course two to go along with the sisters auxiliary book cuz we have a culture right you have stuff to give your children we got the pens that go with it right you can get those now you know so yeah and of course twenty percent of everything fifteen percent off everything in the store twenty percent of everything we collect goes to Mercy charity which goes to Moores right alright um and then just to touch on that real quick some of the initiatives we got um we're just letting people know what we're doing with the money they've already donated right um so it's love truth peace freedom and justice and so love the love initiative is where uh oh we are providing banners to temples because only three temples got voted for but we had enough to provide maybe for seven temples or more right and then it's like it was so much left over it's like we're gonna send them calling cards too so that's the love initiative the truth initiative we've already purchased moorishguypost.org right and that's for y'all thank you for contributing enough for us to go ahead and get that thank you right and so now the only thing we we kinda asking for is content you know you make comics right um maybe we'll start doing some want ads now hiring that kinda thing um so that's gonna be there so that's love truth peace is we will be providing one temple that's printing Korans found Korans they will be provided with the opportunity to I don't wanna say sell uh barter I don't know some way to get temp or Korans to other temples right and then they I guess they'll actually they can make money they'll be getting paid for that so there was enough donated where Khalifa media just provide was able to do this for this temple so that they can print books current Korans to provide them cheaper you know at a lower price to other temples and then those temples can sell them to the public you see how we're helping the temples make finance right on their own you don't have to keep throwing stuff in the bucket it's making them self-sufficient right or how do you say that in um in in Arabic risk yeah the self the self-sufficient right I like that um so that's love truth peace and then freedom is this right no 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 back up freedom is the only thing we're actually asking for donation to if you want to because again it's already like in motion so if you wanna be a part of it you know I'm not gonna go into it there's a whole video talking about it on YouTube Khalifa media YouTube um where the Grand Sheik of Moor Science Temple number twenty-seven Soul Temple is currently enrolled in Sharia banking classes right which is great and then after that we found out that Russia is looking into Sharia banking suppose I'm supposing nobody said this I haven't read this anywhere but I'm supposing because BRICS doesn't have a currency yet and they're looking into Sharia banking and we just happen to be on it so if you wanna donate to help him with his studies and his study materials will be put on a behind a paywall on moorishguypost.org right and like I said before I think it might be just if you donate a dollar you get lifetime access cuz I'm not trying to keep track of it that kinda thing um so and then justice that's this right justice was like yeah I'm gonna walk you through a case that I almost won but it was a black person and they got scared and they ran away right and I forgot I had helped the same person I had helped the same person get their house free and clear goof on a goof on a goof I love goofs right I got their house free and clear the bank was so upset they tried to sue her and um I'm like let them sue all they gotta prove do is prove that they own the house she got scared and um some I forgot what happened and she signed some piece of paper saying alright I agree to go back to paying my mortgage with this bank the bank I'm like you don't even have to finish the story I already know what happened let me tell you the story let me finish the story for you the bank right after you said alright whatever I'm tired of fighting with you you know I'm not gonna keep um pushing this what was it optional form ninety that thing works it does work alright it works um I'm not gonna keep pushing this optional form ninety um so yeah we can go back to what it was before that was filed that bank turned around and sold it to another bank so she had to re-contract they didn't want no part of what she they know she figured out how to do I was done I might just do it again if you can figure out what I did just do it again cuz I'm not doing it again so my thing is I guess this is gonna be kind of a form of therapy if you can think of it like that I've gotten so many people to the door and they turned around and ran this same person why did I keep helping this fault person this same person got a ticket right you gonna love this was amazing it's like this is how sloppy these colonists are this is why I'm like y'all can do this this stuff is that's why I'm like what's the big deal y'all don't need to be scared of these folks they really are degenerate and incompetent they really are right they fall apart at the slightest thing but anyway this person uh got a red light ticket I'm like oh that's easy to fight you know bring the bring the camera in I wanna talk to the camera but before I mean I even got to the chance the chance to say that part I looked at the statue actually I guess we're going into justice right I looked at the statute this is me telling you why I'm doing this I'm giving this back right I looked at the statute that they said she had violated right and then she had to come to the police station and talk to the chief to uh get it resolved I'm like they not gonna even send you to the courthouse they sending you to the police station this is total fraud this is an Arizona statute and we're in Illinois this is an Arizona statute that you violated in Illinois now here's what you about to do or what I'm about to do on your behalf I'm about to turn around and sue these fools for wasting your time and try and extort you they're trying to extort you because they have no justification to extort you and the thing the violation was she didn't come she it was a rolling stop at a red light anyway so I'm like well that's no problem we don't even talk about it because we're gonna focus on giving you what's the minimum five thousand dollars just for them wasting your time I could ask for more but it's just five you know this is easy because that's on their books this is Cook County most corrupt most corrupt um county on planet earth I kid you not you would think like one of these third world countries where it's like the chieftain is in charge or the the ancient mother is in charge no it's Cook County is the most corrupt county um jurisdiction legally is the most corrupt they have their own school of thought in in college Chicago politics is a trip right and I keep getting to winning yeah I'm about to tell this person this and I hope she watching cuz I got stalkers right that's why I haven't been on camera cuz I have stalkers right and I know I got stalkers so um enjoy the show anyway so I'm like yeah just sue them sue them instead of paying this ticket send them a civil suit right file as a pauper and tell the court that they violating you and if they if it comes down when you win they gotta pay your court fees right work just fine in Cook County I couldn't believe it right um cuz everything I try I'm like eh let me just give it a shot right I don't know what I'm I really don't know what I'm doing I just looked it up I've never done any of this stuff before but let me give it a shot but beginning as luck is a thing right and it keeps working but I I like proving myself wrong right so anyway I had her I filed suit on behalf of this person right cuz my thing is you're just a cat's paw I filed suit give me five thousand dollars for wasting my time and they tried to battle it but the judge kept saying you gotta you can't get out of this hit go ahead go ahead take another bite of this apple we're down to the core now we down to the seeds and um settle either pay the five K or negotiate something else right so I sent the person off I can't go cuz I'm not the one suing right and this is kinda 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 nah this is actually why you shouldn't do people's paperwork for them um because I always warn people please read your paperwork it's a yes it's working do you know why it's working will you be able to defend it cuz I can't do it for you right just read it it's very succinct it's very short because I don't know what I'm doing right I do but I've never done this before that's what I mean by no I don't know what I'm doing and then um so off she goes to to talk to the attorney or the whoever this I guess it was the prosecutor cuz it was against the um the county talk to them about a settlement that's what I thought they get back right and I'm like and just walk in the house I'm like so what happened none you know whatever what you mean whatever what happened you know this is easy five thousand dollars that I'm about to use if if this worked you know I can say it worked come on you want some chocolate covered potato chips notice how I remember that detail chocolate covered potato chips what happened to the case uh I couldn't find a parking spot so I went and got some chocolate covered potato chips and came home so instead of helping people I'm done you know but it's like uh South Node and Libra it's time to start cutting off relationships I've been slicing necks left and right and it feels good it feels amazing it's very enlightening like I feel lighter because I don't have to deal with those burdens anymore you know um I don't like the lack of reciprocity where I'll give you the the time it takes to create a human being to give something back and if you don't I gotta bounce right because that's a drain and that's not selfish that's not selfish and if it is selfish fine you know north node is in Aries it's it's time to be selfish it's okay right now you can get away with it right um a little tidbit if you are going through like me if you're going through your nodal reversal you're finding out why your north your south node is in Aries you're finding out right cuz I know I'm finding out I sure am okay with all that said now I can actually get to what I came here for right late I said two ish and got here at three o'clock right but I'm here right Islam but I did give you the introduction right I gave you a story I guess a couple of stories of why I want to help people help themselves because I'm not gonna be helping folks no more I'll show you how to do it the end right because like I tell my children any or my father told me this is what my father told me anybody whatever they're doing you can do it too your brain is just as good as theirs right all they did was try all you gotta do is try and somebody's better than them right that could be you right so my thing is I'm just gonna tell you how to do it it's really easy right so that's the introduction that's the why we want to give something back and it started out as oh it's just gonna be me talking about these different cases I almost won and one that's a trip one that was an amazing trip that I couldn't do anything with because I was part of a temple and now I can't do nothing with because it was a child support issue or child custody issue and now the child is over eighteen but and I'll get to that too maybe I'll get to it today to give y'all a little teaser about what it is excuse me so um this started out with me about to just talk about this these cases that black folks keep like leaving me hanging on it hurts do you understand how hard that is to do like years worth of work sometimes years and then the person's like eh never mind because they didn't do all that work and they didn't pay me for it that's the tripped out part why didn't they pay me for it allow me to introduce myself my name is Tahida Najio Lael alright middle name Sabrina means she who endures long enduring alright um how did I learn how to do this law stuff turns out the person I'm trying my best to like leave people's names out of it but if it slip or you know who I'm talking about whatever I'm trying my best not to to reveal that information so if it gets out whatever anyway while I was working on these cases this person was trying to choose my words carefully this person was enrolled in courses in order to get the student aid money but didn't have any intention of doing the work I was glad to do the work free knowledge are you kidding me are you kidding me go and take the money because I'm getting someone something way more valuable right so while this person thinks they getting over like yeah I'm paying for you to go to paralegal school in Chicago of all places alright and I think it was like the best program in the city and then while I'm taking these lessons check this out I'm dealing with all her problems so I'm I'm not just learning I'm applying as I go that's why I said I don't know what I'm doing because I'm learning it and applying it it's like as soon as I get it in my hand there it goes application because this person was so messy right just messy alright wow I'm getting tired just thinking about her but anyway um so um and it was crazy before I did the thing with her house I I think I submitted that as an assignment let me let me see what this the law professor thinks they said whoo I think this will work wish somebody would try this out it worked alright anyway that was fun but anyway so um my credentials right um I'm from Chicago raised born and raised nation of Islam so very disciplined um very much into community activism very averse to people claiming my stuff or taking my stuff or uh trying to do likewise to those I recognize as my brethren and sisterin alright um yeah this is what happened to the little exes alright I went to the Chicago High School for agricultural sciences yes I went to a tiny school farm on the school or school on a farm farm in the school it was whatever whichever one it works then I went off to the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign washed out because I was not interested in agriculture found myself at the University of Nebraska majoring in education where they introduced me to digital um graphic design I'm in education and they introduced me to graphic design it was dope alright yeah this lighting is wild alright um then I wound up at Arizona State University with and I was like well I'm almost done with this education degree but I'm not I'm not ready to go out and get a job I don't wanna you know do that yet so I'm going to get some more stuff before I leave so I have a degree in education Asian history and Asian Pacific American studies funny that I got all that stuff in Asian before I found out about the Moores it's really interesting how Allah works right and then you know life throws you curveballs I'm not gonna go into that and I wound up um trading skills for the means of survival like write up this paperwork for me cuz I'm a pretty good writer right write up this paperwork for me and um you can have this this room write up this paperwork for me you can have this whole apartment write up this paperwork it wound up to this while write up this paperwork for me you can have this house yes that happened and it came with a car it was tripped out right and once again got them to the door and they turned around so I'm not helping folks no more I'll tell you what to do and you do with that what you will right and I'm not doing nothing on the state level only on the federal cuz the state is too messy and it's too varied right um so that's my credentials and I've been offered I've won cases on appeal like at the state level I've that I actually did because I'm I told the person straight up the first time you block me I'm done and they left me alone and I actually won an appeal at the state level it was dope like yeah cuz you gotta either be a trial lawyer or an appellate lawyer usually they're not both I'm both right so um let me introduce you to some of the books we gonna be using because I'm not just going off emotion or opinion or anything like that right um I'm gonna read something to y'all real quick you probably saw it already this is from lawyers lawsuits and legal rights right this is a book that goes into the different types of attorneys right the different types of associations right and the different reasons you should sue because apparently not enough people in this country sue right so this is from page three in the introduction that's why you read from cover to cover instead of what's just assigned right excuse me let's see it seems a pervasive view yet though the anecdote the anecdotes that punctuate this narrative of cultural decline are vivid the evidence to support it is surprisingly scarce research typically shows Americans rarely take their disputes to court one of every one hundred Americans injured in an accident oh wait of every one of every one hundred Americans injured in an accident only ten make a liability liability claim and only two file a lawsuit so ten make a claim two actually follow up and take it to court out of a hundred right of every one hundred Americans who believe they have lost more than one thousand dollars because of someone else's legal illegal conduct only five will file suit that jumped out to me I mean I read this in what this was twenty twelve I got this book right this was before I found out about what was that or before I designed the the logo that Cam Ray Bay of uh Moore House Law he just stealing from everybody right he stole my logo and opened up a law a law thing and he's he's up there in Canada stealing from folks and now he trying to rob people in prison right um and why is he getting away with this because don't nobody sue him I wonder how long it would take for him to stop if he had to stop and deal with a court case right but I took care of it I'm not suing I'm doing the best I can I've done something about it I've been letting the um the frauds up there know yeah you know this ain't my brother so sick of that kinda thing and apparently they going after him um cuz he won't stop anyway so I say sue him so when medical malpractice results in some in serious injury only one of eight victims wow one in eight makes a claim I actually knew a girl like that her father went in I think to get his appendix removed and they accidentally removed his kidney they didn't accidentally give it back they didn't even do nothing about it they just like oh at least he made it out alive these are some Mexicans too I'm like I can't believe y'all let that happen to that dude and he couldn't work again after that because he only had one kidney and they let him get away with that right um let's see far from a nation of litigators the United States seems to be filled with lumpers people inclined to lump their grievances rather than press them further claims of quote unquote litigation explosion are overblown indeed some studies suggest that those supposedly stoic pioneers of frontier America were far more inclined to sue than allegedly litigation loving their allegedly were far more inclined to sue than allegedly litigation-loving, they're allegedly litigation-loving descendants. So, the further we got away from this, this monstrosity, this experiment's um, establishment, the less we know about defending our rights, isn't that tripped out? I guess those people came over here and they realized, wow, I finally got rights, I'ma fight for these, to the death for these, you gonna pay me if you mess with me. And now, fast forward two hundred and some years, and they like, oh well, at least I survived, but did I die? Whatever, um, so let's see. Nor do Americans today seem much more litigious than citizens of other nations. Though comparisons are difficult and the data skimpy, some researchers even believe that Americans are no more in innately lawsuit prone than the Japanese, the supposed saints of non-litigiousness. So that's from this book, right? And of course, it makes sense that the people who violate, I mean, I tell Moors, every time you step out the door, it's probably a lawsuit, right? And of course, they're gonna be spreading stuff, oh, people are sued, shame on them, shame on them. And it all started with that lady, I think it's in this book, it started with that lady who spilled that, who had that hot coffee spill in her lap. Yeah, you should have been more careful, nah, that coffee shouldn't have been hot enough to burn through your skin like that. And they saying she was wrong for suing. And if you were um, alive back then, I was like maybe eight or nine or something, but I remember it happening. If you were alive back then, you remember how the attitude kinda changed, before that, everybody's like, I'll sue, I'll sue, it was even in the cartoons. And then after that happened, it became shameful, right? But then, you know, this, they, the sentence kinda brought it back for me around the age of twelve, right? In more the words, boy, I'll sue you and take all your money. Yeah, that became my mantra, yo, I will sue your socks off. Give me a chance, but it's like being Mike Tyson, nobody wanna fight you, right? Some of my other friends, the principles of legal research, again. I'm tired of people assuming and interpreting, because if you take that mess in court, I'mma laugh at you, I'mma ask for the tape of the judge laughing at you, and then I'm gonna be like, look, let's laugh together. Because stop going up in there what you think, shut them down by what, with what they wrote. It's not their opinion either, I mean, yes, I know that, in the courts when judges write down their orders, whatever, they have their opinions, and what's always right there with it is grounded in statute law, in law somewhere, Allah willing, right? My favorite, grounded, evidence for paralegals. Why for paralegals and not for attorneys? Paralegals are to attorneys what nurses are to doctors. If you really wanna know the details, you need to ask the paralegal, right? And then, civil litigation process and procedure. I don't even think this one is available anymore, if it is, it's pricey, yeah. And I have a few other ones, I have the Allwood, I forgot what it's short for, the American Legal Writers. Um, something, I forgot what the D is for, but yeah, it's how you, it's how you quote stuff, so yeah. Um, yeah, I think that's it. So yeah, that was my introduction, y'all. Uh, oh, I forgot, it started out as justice, right? And other Moors have expressed an interest and they want to contribute too, right? They wanna give too. So again, going back to the Freedom Initiative, how our Grand Sheik is taking Sharia classes. So not only are we doing law and legal on Sabbaths, maybe around this time, maybe throughout the day, we'll see how it goes. Um, the Grand Sheik will be joining me, Allah willing, to discuss that, right? Let's talk about Sharia banking and how it differs from basically every other style of banking, right? And why would BRICS, I'mma say Russia, right? Who's like, it's like, no, none of the other BRICS nations are looking, researching what they gonna do about the currency, Russia is. And they working, they're not just doing it on their own, they're working with their Islamic provinces to get this in, in line. So yeah, he'll be coming on here, and I'll be studying it too, right? And Allah willing, y'all will be studying it too, because I'm, I've been downloading the materials, I will be making them available on mooresguidepost.org. For anybody who's donated any amount between uh, November twenty seventh and January eighth, right? And I keep lists, I have to keep lists, right? Um, and the other thing, so we're doing law and legal, those are two different terms, you should know, those are two different things. Law and legal are not the same, right? Then we're doing banking, and we're also doing business, right? Because, then I'mma close up with this. Um, I run a few businesses, I think it's three, I, I, I kinda lost track, I think it's three that are currently active. And it occurred to me, I have one that's about eight years old, and I've never filed taxes on it. And I'm like, that shouldn't have occurred to me, I should have been notified of something like that by now, in eight years? Nobody's ever said anything to me, not the state, not the IRS. Uh, and then what brought that to mind? Somebody charged me some sales tax and I was trying to figure out how to get it back. And then it was like, wait a minute, I've never filed taxes for this, nothing. I think every year, every couple of years I file, like, yeah, we still open, that kinda thing, a, a, a notice of existence or something, right? And then I, I mess around, like, I know how to do taxes, I, I, I went to school to be a, uh, yet another thing, you constantly, kaizen. You constantly improving yourself, so I also have a certification in bookkeeping. So I'm like, well, you know, let me use this. And so I'm going through my, my books, and I'm just like, wait a minute. Before I do all this, I gotta do all this anyway, just to see where all the money's going, but before I do all this, do I even have to pay taxes? Maybe that's why they haven't bothered me. Turns out, I messed around and because of the way I set up everything, you know, with um, charity organizations, uh, nonprofits, which, these are not the same, this is one and two, and then use another holding company for that, so I guess I got three businesses. And because of the way I set it up, I don't, I, I have to let them know I exist, right? And that's about it, and there's an even easier way to do it, where you don't have to file anything, right? Just because, and it's, it's not for everyone, not everybody can use this, it's really cool. And like I said, I messed around, stumbled on it, I, it was a goof, right? And um, so yeah, that'll be the business part, and um, we'll be inviting other Moors on to share their successes, right? Uh, so yeah, welcome to the Saturday or Sabbath Study Sessions, right? Let's build, and with that, um, I'm done, you know? Hit up Mercy Charities, hit up mercy, mercy, M R C I charities.org. And um, who else? MoorishAmericans.org, that's Temple Twenty Seven. Um, and KhalifaMedia.com and Saru, MadeBySarush.com. And I think that's it, if I left you out, please let me know so I can make sure to say something about y'all next time. Dang, I missed all this stuff, I, this thing didn't move. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm almost fifty, alright? So I'm not that great with this, this, this stuff keeps moving too fast, I can't keep up with it. So yeah, I'm feeling my own, I'm kinda feeling like my mom must have felt in the eighties. You know, anyway, with that being said, thank you for your time, thank you for your indulgence. And with that, Islam Moors, and I'll check y'all next Sabbath, if not before then, Islam. Oh, and if you want to like suggest study, or if you got questions or suggestions, hit me up at islam@khalifamedia.com or info@khalifamedia.com. Now I'm done, peace.